I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the agenda is next is the approval of the agenda as presented. I hear motion to approve.
Second.
Motion from Charles. Who made the second? Bob. Discussion. District one?
District one votes yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
District four votes yes.
Five?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And now we'll turn this portion of the work session over to Greg Sprouts with Central Midlands.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you all for having me. And I guess my objective tonight is just to walk you all through the plan as it currently stands. We put a draft together and fed and set it up really good and helping to work through it and make sure that we got it in a condition that we thought you all would like. And so I'm just gonna kind of go through the structure of the document and tell you how we laid it out, just go over some of the highlights of the process that we went through, and then we can talk about the specifics pieces of the plan. So to start it off, have you noticed the way we structured this is we talked a little bit about what strategic planning is, a very basic synopsis reflecting the things that we talked about the first work session and I think in one of the updates that we provided to you all. And then we talked about the process that we use, which I'll go through in a minute. And then we go through and organize it as we discussed in one of the previous meetings, as you see on the thing in the back there, the way we, the framework of the document, the three primary themes that we, the way we've organized all of the goals and objectives based on community, economy, and government. And that's where the real meat of the document is. So I will bore you with all these details again, but we bulleted out the things that we felt were the really important pieces of the strategic planning process, the reason that you all decided to go down this road with us, and the benefit that that brings to the community. And as you know, we started this process off, we kicked it off with the work session that Jeff Shaker facilitated, where we went through and identified what the priorities of council were, and the prioritization process. And basically, we've summarized those things up there. These were the big takeaways that we got from that process with you all. The economic development, improving water and sewer, connections between the downtown districts, all the way down through downtown revitalization, and talking about growth and annexation strategies. We followed that up with a very productive work session with the department heads and staff. And that actually was a very fun process for me. I learned quite a bit about the town and a lot about some of the things that, the perspectives of the town staff in terms of what needs to be done. And the great thing about this process is that what the town staff identified as priorities fit really nicely. Is it not in focus?
No, it's not well. Either my glasses are really dirty.
It could be the resolution of the images, so it might not get much better than that.
That was.
Yep.
Is that good?
Yep, that's better. Dennis? I saw you doing this.
It's better than it was.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Yeah, he can read it. It's the same, it's mirrored in the document.
About as good as I'm gonna get.
Yeah.
Better than it was.
So what we, some of the things that we outlined, that we got from that meeting with the department heads, they went into a little bit more specifics, kind of the details of the larger priorities that you all cited. We talked about the need for public workforce development strategies, fleet and asset management, equipment training, talked a lot about communications and outreach strategies, and things that we can do internally here to increase efficiency in the operation of government and providing services to the citizens. And then the next piece of this was we went out and went through the citizen and stakeholder participation process. And that included a public forum, and then we had also had a focus, which we operated just very similar to the public forum, but we invited people that we knew were stakeholders within the community and asked them targeted information. Some of you all participated in that. And we also held a separate follow-up public meeting at one of the local churches. And so we got a lot of really good impact input from the participants of this, of these forums. And you can see in the word chart over here, the size of the word reflects the number of times that we heard that coming up over and over in our notes. And so the public was really focused on, again, a lot of the same things that we heard from you all in the very beginning of this process, talking about economy and the need for good quality jobs, transportation, water and sewer, road maintenance and improvement, and then the quality of life things such as, you know, the need for more local restaurants and shopping and social types of activities. And one last thing I'll mention about this is, as you know, we had a, we put out a public survey. And as long as I've been doing this stuff, I felt like we had a really good response rate. I think we ended up with about 350 total surveys was the final count, which we got a lot of good information. And the, a lot of it, again, mirrored, we kept hearing the same things over and over again. So that is probably one of the best takeaways from this whole process for us was that between what you all provided us in terms of your priorities, what the town staff provided us, and what we were hearing from the public, they were all overlapping. There was synergy between all three groups. And so we feel like you all are doing a really good job of understanding what your constituents are interested in.
What percentage did you have response from the Hispanic population?
Even though we did, yeah, we didn't have a very good response rate. But, yeah, we, that's something that's.
But you, it went out to them.
Yeah, we translated the entire survey into Spanish, and we put the flyers out throughout town in both English and Spanish.
You actually went out with your Spanish, didn't you take your Spanish speaker out?
Yeah, to do some outreach. So this is what we came up with in terms of the structure of the document. So again, we identified these larger, based on all the input we received, we identified three larger themes, community, economy, and government. And we wrote some narrative that summarized what we meant by those things. And I apologize, I can't even read it off of that slide there. But I think it's important to go through this. So by community, we're talking about enhancing the quality of life for all town residents by strengthening neighborhoods, revitalizing business districts, preserving and promoting historic and cultural resources, and creating new opportunities for recreational and social activity. Did I accidentally understand that? So that's the community piece of it here. And that is an all-encompassing overarching theme that we felt like really reflected the priorities we're hearing from everybody in terms of what was important from the community development perspective. In terms of economy, we wrote strengthen and diversify the local economy by supporting local and regional workforce development and business growth opportunities. So again, that fit really well with what we were hearing in terms of the need for job creation and business opportunities. And then on the government side, increasing government efficiency and effectiveness by providing high-quality services, state-of-the-art facilities, and long-term financial sustainability. So those three things there, the services to the residents, the improving the facilities that the town is responsible for owning, maintaining, and operating in good condition, and then thinking about the long-term financial sustainability of the government, how can we make the best use of our existing financial resources as well as planning for the future by looking at new financial resources. So then we took those overarching themes and broke them down into more refined goals and objectives. So under community, we looked specifically at housing, historic downtown districts, historic preservation, and then community activities, because the community activities was something that we heard, we heard a lot about and a lot of interest in. Under economy, looked, thinking about economic development, workforce development, and occupational health. And then you'll see the biggest one here was the government side of things, where we focused on information technology, the human resource side, public outreach and community relations, updating codes and ordinances, finance procurement and procurement sustainability, water and sewer upgrades, which was another thing that we kept hearing over and over again, and transportation planning and public safety.
Can I ask you one question?
Yep.
When your community, economy, and government overlap, what's the common theme there where the three intersect?
Well, I don't, I, I have to think about it.
Yeah, I don't think we specifically assigned a specific theme.
I'd, just my curiosity, I'd love to know what the common thread is between the three, if we can determine that.
Yeah, I put some thought into that. We didn't, we didn't spell it out in this, but when you look at these sub-areas underneath those three overarching themes, there is a lot of overlap. So it actually took a lot of, a lot of effort on our, on our part trying to think through some of these specific types of objectives, how they fit in, which, where they fit in, because they could fit in multiple places. So from a very general sense, you know, a lot of those things could fit in that middle area. But we can definitely try to flush that out a little bit more.
The bullets under government are not by priority, are they?
No, no, nothing, I don't think anything in here, the way we've laid this out, really reflects the prioritization. Okay, let's see. Okay, so we'll just, I'll walk through these really quickly, because I know you all have other business. But, so the goal, goal, and we, goal A, B, and C under this community theme, housing, we look, we really want to evaluate the community housing needs to improve and maintain the high quality of the housing stock and the neighborhoods in the town. So for objectives, we're looking at things like strengthening the building safety and nuisance code, enforcement that goes along with that, looking at the potential for rental property standards and landlord registration program, and then looking at working with the county to maybe reexamine the potential for the minor home repair program that they had going through their CDVG program, which could provide a lot of support for the local residents in keeping up with the properties. Under historic downtown districts, developing a plan to create beautiful, economically stable, and socially vibrant historic business districts in both Batesburg and Leesville. And so under that, we're looking at specific objectives of inventorying downtown business, cultural, and recreational assets, using that to help develop a common vision for each of the districts, and then looking at other opportunities for funding projects that could go a long way towards helping to enhance, enhance the downtown districts. Going along with that is historic preservation, which, which was something that we heard a lot about, and that, this, we know that the town has a lot of culturally and historically significant resources. So developing a townwide strategy to protect and preserve these unique historic and cultural resources within the community. And we looked at things such as developing incentives for rehabilitation and restoration efforts. Going along with this is taking the time to really do, doing a good inventory of the historic properties within the town, and then using those resources for marketing and branding efforts to help revitalize the downtown districts. Under community activities, working with community partners to promote, coordinate, and sponsor a diverse range of high-quality recreational and social activities. So the one thing we heard a lot about was looking at opportunities for new activities within the town, and looking at developing a coordinated or comprehensive plan for marketing and promoting activities across the town. We heard a little bit about geographic diversity for the town-sponsored events, making sure that we're doing everything we can to promote, promote town events in both, both sides, and developing a community facility master plan. So under the parks and recreation piece in particular there, that we heard a lot about, the need to really understand what community facilities we have that we're responsible for, inventorying them, and really getting a good idea of what condition they're in, and what opportunities there are to invest in upgrading and maintaining those facilities for the long term. See where am I? Community revitalization. We talked about a lot of things here, developing and maintaining community revitalization strategy to enhance the aesthetic appeal and accessibility throughout town. So there are a lot of pieces to this, one of which, bike-ped connectivity plan. I actually have been working on through, through another project, we've been working in other jurisdictions in Lexington County, trying to identify opportunities to, to really study and, and look for big catalyst projects for increasing alternative transportation means, primarily bike and pedestrian facilities. And Batesburg-Leesville has a really unique opportunity with the two separate downtown districts to look at better connectivity between the two. And we've been working, I talked to Teddy a couple weeks ago, I've identified some funding where we're actually trying to leverage some federal dollars to do a plan for Batesburg-Leesville, Swansea, and Chapin, two other communities that we're working with. So that's something I hope to be working with you all in the near future, that I think could be really beneficial, because we'll be doing a detailed analysis of the community and trying to identify some, some good projects that we could target investment towards. Beautifications, streetscaping, wayfinding, and town gateways, just in general, looking for opportunities to invest in those types of activities that could go a long way towards revitalizing the business district and the neighborhoods, and other types of things like facade improvement grant program, which a lot of communities have been using to try to help business owners improve the facades and the general look of the retail areas. And then on the planning side of things, we want to update the comprehensive plan. And the great thing about the timing of doing this strategic plan and identifying a lot of these priorities is this feeds really well into the comprehensive plan update process. And I think the, the amount of community participation and involvement that we got in this process will really be able, will be able to roll right into that comprehensive plan update. So a lot of the goals and objectives here, we can put into there. And then another piece of that, related to the comprehensive plan, but related to some of the priorities that we heard from folks, was looking at the annexation and growth management strategy. So really having a detailed conversation about the long-term growth of the town, and what we want to do in terms of annexation. And then the way that the comprehensive plan works, it really sets the stage for reviewing and updating your zoning ordinances to reflect all of the things that we're talking about here, and all of the things that we'll be doing in the comprehensive plan update. Okay, economic development, you know, I'll try to speed this up here, but one of the things that we were talking about in terms of the economic development side is looking, doing an economic development planning study for the town, where we can specifically identify market gaps, niches, and competitive advantages that the town has that we can, we can try to leverage. Part of this is doing an asset inventory that will help with business recruitment and retention strategies, and incentives and those types of things. And then we talked a lot about workforce development and opportunities for workforce development programs, and working with existing partners to promote that for, for the town. And then occupational health, leveraging partnerships with the healthcare providers to promote and support occupational safety and health initiatives. Then we get into the government side. The first goal was internal information technology. And one of the things here, you know, we've already, the town staff have already been working on, I think with input from you all, looking at the workflow management system to increase operational efficiency. There's a lot of opportunity there, and that was something that the town staff really put as a high priority. They felt like they could get a lot of mileage of those investments in that type of system. And then developing and maintaining an information technology capital improvement plan to help meet departmental needs. So identifying the most important things that we need to do from an internal perspective to increase the use of information technology. Human resource development, we talked a lot about workforce recruitment and retention strategy for the town. There is, there's a need, this is not unique to town of Batesburg-Leesville, but a lot of small communities that operate, own and operate their own water and wastewater systems, is being able to get certified operators on staff and to keep them there. Similar types of issues in the public safety department. So there's a lot of opportunity, I think, to really think through some strategies for making sure that we are getting, get, get people in here that can stay for the long term and grow with the town. PR and community relations, looking at a communication, communication strategy for public outreach, doing this across departments, and doing better staff training for improving customer service. And then on the flip side of that, doing some effort into communications and outreach with town residents to make sure that they fully understand all of the services that the town is responsible for. And so improving that two-way communication there, and keeping staff and council participating in community and civic organizational meetings throughout town. Updating codes and ordinances as necessary, looking through and making sure that we are doing everything we can to expand revenue sources for the town, updating the procurement policy. And then when we get into water and wastewater upgrades, these were things that I know you all have had discussions about, the long-term viability of the water system, the automated meter reading system, and just developing a larger plan for addressing critical needs for water and sewer facilities and infrastructure. Transportation planning, there's a lot of opportunity. This is not something that, that the town has a lot of direct control over, so this is something that would require continued coordination with entities such as the Council of Governments and the, and the county and SCDOT, to make sure we're doing everything we can to keep the roads in the best condition they are, understand what our congestion issues are, and strategies we can employ to, to address those issues. We did hear about some, some interest in looking at transit again. So I dusted off the old transit feasibility study, and I think there's some opportunities to, to update that and take a fresh look at it. And then moving on to public safety, we talked about community policing strategies, best management practices to improve service quality and delivery, investing in technology for, for the public safety departments, and making sure we're doing everything we can for the best equipment maintenance policies, so that we can increase the longevity of all of the equipment. So I believe that has gotten us through most of, most of it there. So I'd be happy to take any questions. And this is, this is a draft, so we are looking for input from you all. And if you can't, if we don't have any, anything right now, we're happy to, I'm happy to take questions as we go.
Great. How would we begin the prioritizing process?
Well, there's a number of ways we can do it, if that's something that you all want to see in, in this document. I think a lot of that's probably at the staff level. You know, we've talked about the best way to take what we identify here, and develop some, you know, work programs that Teddy and everybody can work from over the next year.
I mean, right now, all of these were mentioned, these were, everything that you see in there were reoccurring mentions between the council work session, the department head work session, the public input session. The reason all that is in here is this was the reoccurring themes that we heard, and goals and objectives. And right now, that, what is specifically in here is not listed in a priority order of sorts. If you want to list what's in here in specific priority orders, that's something we can do. But everything that is in here has really been deemed priority in its own sense, and things that we need to be working on within these things.
Well, I guess in my mind, I'm like Charles in that I expected to see something that was, okay, we are the, the next, over the next year, these are the things we're gonna look to, to address. Over the next five years, these are the things we look to address. Over the next 10 years, you know, that, that we have a strategic plan that, that we're addressing. If we don't, you know, get to a checklist that this is done, and then it moves over to year two, but I think that's what I was looking to come out of this strategic planning, that we see an overall direction that we're taking the town. Like you said, these are things that we've all heard over the last 10, 15 years that need to be addressed. Compiling them into lists, we probably all could have done those individually, but we want to see, or at least I do, I want to see what, what we are, as a collective group, are planning to address over the next year, over the next five years, over the next 10 years.
I think that was part of the process of the intention of, of developing the strategic plan, is then to develop a long-range plan as part of the strategic plan.
Right. But I mean, in, in the final draft of this, is that not what we're gonna be presented with, is, is ideally?
Long-range plan will actually be a spin-off from this. Yeah, I think we need to identify the top five or the top 10, and then look at strategically how long it would take for implementation for some of these others. Yeah, I think there needs to be a prioritized list.
I, I mean, that's.
What rises to the top?
And I would recommend, if that's, if that's the route we want to go, and have very specific order of sorts, like prioritization. I, I think we do it within the themes. We, we look within the theme category, and we prioritize within the theme category. Then we move to the, to the economy theme, let's prioritize within that, a priority order.
That's why I wanted to see the common factor, where the three circles come together, where they intersect. What is the common denominator there? And those, out of those three components, that ought to be what's the first priority? Makes sense?
And we can, you know, we've got, there's a lot, we can, we can definitely sit down and kind of think through a strategy for accomplishing that.
I'm like Rachel, though, we've got all the bullet points within each segment, but there have to be priorities.
There was a lot more than what's in this that was put out there. This was really a collection of the, the most reoccurring, standing things.
But out of that, there still has to be a one, two, three, four, five.
I think we'll, we'll get together, and let's see what we can come up with, with a good option to go back, come back and do that again. Jeff, do you have any, Jeff Shaker arrived here, but I'm like, um, does someone do best strategic planning?
Welcome, Jeff.
Good evening. I'm sorry, I started a little late.
Does anything jump off the top of your head?
No, I mean, I've seen it done both ways. So, I mean, I think if you want to add priorities.
Speak both ways.
But initially, isn't that what you presented at your initial, as, as a strategic plan, is what our goals are, long range, short term, mid-range. And, and that's what I expected to see at the end, end of this, is what are our, our goals for the next year? What are our goals for the, the next five years and the overall 10 years? Knowing that they're, they're gonna be changing as, as, what we change as we change as a council, as our population, but, but still, that we've got a specified direction that we're going, rather than just bullet points. Like I said, these are things Like I said, these are things that we, in the community, as business owners, as organizations, have addressed for years, you know, but it's never been put out there. When are we going to take care of it?
How do we allocate our funds if we don't know which one we need to allocate to first?
We can, we'll...
Our resources.
We'll go back and talk about the best way. At least we know this is, this is what we're working with. These are the items we're working with at this point. Now, let's talk about the best way to, what will likely be the best way to prioritize this and we'll come back and go through that process of trying to put this into it.
And what I would say is there is, this was kind of synthesized into something that we wanted to have that was a real clear overarching look that we can put on the website and people can download and get a good understanding of where your priorities are and to show that what we heard from them is reflected in the strategic plan. And then we also kind of have a, you know, a background, more of a work program type piece that we've been working on too, that we can kind of, you know, integrate into it. That is more for Teddy than them to use moving forward, that reflect all of that.
Well, Jeff was, like Rita asked Jeff to do, he was going to give options. You seemed both ways. You said, can you expound on that?
I have, yeah. And it really comes down to council and management's decision on how you want to do it. But in some cases, you know, you go through the brainstorming process and, you know, if we did this at the council level with the Bushett Coods, and I think it gave them a good feel for the relative importance of the items that were thrown up on the flip charts. In some cases where councils have boiled this down to, for instance, the document that was presented to you, or has been presented to you already, they just simply use timeframes, all those items, realistic timeframes, to determine for the order. And I mean, they're just pursuing all of the items in the plan. A city maybe like Rock Hill that has a very large strategic planning document that really kind of guides all their decision-making, they do have priorities assigned. So, and I mean, I've seen examples where, you know, there are priorities within those...
Mount Pleasant's one of the ones that used your first example, set up a very similar to this, except for each individual objective, it stated a timeframe for that. By the end of 2017, we will complete this. And another one may say by the end of 2019, we will have completed this. Well, both of those may be within that one goal underneath that theme, but they have different timeframes.
I'd love to see projects prioritized like that because if you don't have a target date, you just keep pushing it back, pushing it back, pushing it back. So this gives you something tangible to reach for.
So would you prefer to go through this and kind of rank everything that's within this? Or would you prefer to go through this and try to look at what is a realistic timeline for completion of that objective and go through each objective?
It would be interesting to see where everything was the same, where those circles all cross each other and maybe use that as a launching point for seeing what might be the most, you know...
Some of those intersections may be long-term. They may not be a medium or short-term. But I still think that's a need to know.
Yeah, I do too, because I think it's, that a lot of times it's been talked over that we can talk things to death. But we never, it's like Rita said, it gets pushed and pushed and pushed, there's no resolution.
Anything else with regards to strategic planning?
No surprises.
There are no surprises.
I appreciate Jeff and great Rita's effort in helping us get to this point in the public and councils. It's a lot of work to get it to this point and we're almost there, a little bit more to do, but...
Do you or Jeff have any recommendations moving forward?
Moving forward for, as far as trying to accommodate what you all are asking for? Yeah, I think this is something we've, like Ted said, there's a lot more work that we've done. This is sort of the boiled down final document. So I think if we just sit down and go through a lot of the stuff that we've put together, we can easily kind of break it down the way you all are asking for it.
And will you be accessible as we get into the meat and potatoes and priorities and helping develop an action plan for implementation?
Absolutely, yeah.
To at least bounce ideas off of?
Yeah.
And I think y'all touched on this already, but I mean, really the key with a strategic plan and it not being something that collects does, and actually being a working plan is with those tasks, clear assignments, who's responsible for, timeframes for completion, and making the measure rule in some way. Whether it's a metric, you know, it's a number, or just you can evaluate, did we do it or did we not? You know, maybe a little more qualitative.
You're talking my talk, I love visual outcomes.
Yeah, yeah.
Let me say one more thing. Great ideas, we need a how-to-use-it plan to be along with that.
And I think the how-to-use-it plan is something that gets updated, it can actually get updated annually. You know, things change and opportunities. Yeah, that may, you may end up reshuffling some of your priorities because there's an item that maybe was a second-tier priority, but you can get it done now.
Well, until we identify priorities, we got to have somewhere to start.
I do think, I like the idea of there's some accountability. When there's responsibility, there's accountability.
All right?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all.
All right. Does anybody want to take a, I think, anybody else want to take a quick break before we start?
I love that.
Yep.
So, some point in time I want to go.
I, yeah, check on out sometimes. Find out, because I understand it's quite an act. But they also say, oh, you've got to count the box, you know. Anywhere to eat, that's, oh, you'll find. And, but yet it happens.
Y'all ready? Are y'all on another minute? All right, we're going to get started on that segment real quick. Couple things. Number one, we do have Jeff Shaker here with us tonight. Kind of two-part, one-part strategic planning, he was here from the very beginning. So just wanted him back here for any insight that he made about. Number two, as our local government representative for the municipal association, you know, Jeff is a great resource for any information. But he has a lot of information and knowledge related to hospitality tags. He was the city manager in the city, for the city of Newbury, where they had a hospitality tax. I think they had a couple of big projects with their conference center and the Newbury Opera House. He can, you know, I'm going to try and give you everything that I can give you. If there's some very specific questions or insight that he can provide, just so we make sure we get all the information related to this tonight. Just wanted to ensure that he was here in case we had anything that he could weigh in on. So back into January work session that we had, you know, there were articles that had come out to Twin City News. There were a lot of groups starting to talk about hospitality tags. And at that work session in January, you guys asked the staff to go back, gather all information related to hospitality tags and to bring it back before you as a council to give you the insights on what it means for Batesburg Leesville, what it can be used for, types of projects that can be done and how much it can bring in, just anything and everything. So we've tried to compile all that for tonight. So to begin with, what's the purpose of a, yes ma'am?
Before I start taking notes, are we going to have, can we get copies of your presentation?
Yes, ma'am, yeah. So to begin, the purpose of a hospitality tax is to spur community and economic development and grow through tourism. It's to support tourism-related expenses and costs that are incurred by local governments. For example, right now, we have costs related to our parks of recreation that's built into our general fund budget. We do have costs related to town events that we currently spend out of the general fund. Things like that can be used as costs moving forward out of the hospitality tax fund. It's to repair and improve tourism-related infrastructure, community facilities, roads, bridges, water, sewer. So when you think about community facilities, we have our park facilities, we have our train depot, we have the Haynes Auditorium facility. Not to mention any new facilities that we may want to do in the future related to bringing tourism in. And it's to promote and advertise tourism-related activities that we have here in Batesburg Leesville. So a lot of cities, I know Bluffton is real big and I think you have noticed it. Bluffton's really big about promoting their tourism down I-95. If you travel down I-95, you will consistently see advertisement for Bluffton as you drive down there. They fund that type of advertisement through hospitality tax funds. So what is a hospitality tax? This is out-of-state law. It is a 2% sales tax applied on the sale of prepared meals and beverages and establishments or on the sale of prepared food and beverage and establishments licensed for on-premise consumption. And that includes alcohol, alcoholic beverages, beer and wine. So it's quite simple. If the meals are prepared and the intent is to be consumed, then a 2% hospitality tax would be applied to that. So who are those required to collect H-tags? Restaurants, bars, lounges, private clubs, any hotels or motels. And that's not on the room, that would be on any food prepared within the hotel or alcoholic beverages sold in the hotel. Caterers, grocery stores and convenience stores. Example would be Mama &amp; Pops with their prepared food, Quick Carry with their hot dogs, or any other gas stations that do that type of service.
Can I go ask you a quick question about it? Caterers, we know that our friends down the street, Sheely's, do a tremendous amount of catering and a lot of that is not sell in town. If they cater in Aiken, do they collect the 2% for us?
No, if they cater in Aiken, they would pay, since Aiken has a hospitality tax, they would pay Aiken hospitality tax for that catering job. This was the conversation I had to call Jeff, I was posed with this question and I had to call Jeff and get clarification.
Is there, Jeff, you want the food is prepared in Batesburg?
Well, the, but I want to say, the point would be in the community.
No, the point is, it would actually be in Batesburg because when you, if you cater...
That's where I, that's where I got bogged down too.
See, if you cater, the check comes to Batesburg, the food is prepared in Batesburg, so...
But it's prepared for on-premise consumption and you got to ask where is the on-premise at? I think you said with regards, Mr. Sheely's here tonight, that when sheeleys would come to the fire station conference center, that they would pay hospitality tax on that catered meal to do that. Any other questions right now? So examples of items subject to H-tags. Any food that has to be heated, even muffins and bagels, oven-ready pizzas, including single slices, nachos, hot dogs. If you imagine walking in a gas station and there's one of those things making hot dogs and then you make some nachos over here, it would, a H-tax would be applied to those items that are being prepared. Fountain drinks, and I will go ahead and say that, the next one is items exempt from H-tags. So canned or bottled drinks, but if you come back, fountain drinks would be H-tags, canned or bottled drinks. So if you walk in Quick Carry, I would use that for an example. When you walk to the cooler, you grab a 20-ounce Diet Dr. Pepper, you would not pay an H-tax on that. But if you walk over to the fountain drink and you grab a cup and you get a drink out of the fountain drink, you would pay an H-tax on that.
Oh, Ted, sorry, go ahead and get your... I want to, plus this as you're going along, because you mentioned Bluffton. Bluffton is on the way to Hilton Head, so they have a beach. Lot of pass-through traffic. Focus on the Mama &amp; Pops and Quick Carry to get a hot dog, are using local bucks, the majority of them.
I don't need to, I'll be honest, I don't know if I can quantify who's the majority and who's the purchase to purchase in town because I certainly wouldn't have enough statistics to know if the majority of people are...
We're not getting, folks, we're not getting folks coming through here going to the beach like Bluffton is and Sheely's is a destination, you know. So if you go into Sheely's, you're not going to stop and get a hot dog or a chip or a drink or a fountain drink, you're going to Sheely's to eat and then you're probably going to go back out.
I think about the amount of people that come into this town from surrounding, outlying rural areas to get food. You know, I actually think that the food sector in this town is almost tourism in itself because people are coming here to eat. Because they don't have the food resources in a lot of these neighboring communities that we have here. I actually think this town is a huge food industry. And I can tell you in seeing, we do over 30 million a year in food sales here in Batesburg Leesville. I have compiled that number with regards to restaurants.
Can we kind of get that information, that statistics if it's possible? And it might just be a few, I don't know how you do it, but I'd like to know kind of a rough percentage if it's possible, how many folks are eating out of town, if they're not out of town? How many folks are local bucks?
Well, I do know, Steve, this is just from observation, especially on Fridays, that the migrant workers that are bused in, a lot... that the migrant workers that are bused in, a lot of them go to the convenience stores and, and get food, I've, I've witnessed that a lot, as well as the folks at Amex, that work at Amex, they come in to, I think, catch the checks in, in Batesburg. And I see lots of them with, with-
They're not really, you can't really call them tourists.
No, 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 but I'm talking, you're not, you're talking about out-of-town folks.
Right, but it's supposed to be a tourism tax, right?
They don't live there, well-
No, it's taxed to promote-
To promote tourism.
To create tourism opportunities and to, and to supplement the tourism that we have. Really, the point of H-tags is to do things within this community to improve it, to draw more people in so that more peoples will eat at the restaurants that we have. You know, this is a statistic that's later in there, but I'll go ahead and say it, and you know, I've, I talked with Jeff about this earlier, just to confirm that, that what we came up with was right. But the majority of municipalities in this state that have an H-tax, see a 5% to 10% increase on an annual basis in the amount of H-tax money that they're bringing in. And why is that? Because they're doing things and improvements in their community, they're creating new events and new activities to bring more people in, but when those people come into town, they eat at the restaurants. So you see the restaurant numbers begin to rise.
Just 5% to 10% yearly, you say?
And Jeff, you said it was 7% on an annual basis in Newberry that you guys saw?
Uh, yeah, I actually do the math.
Well- Since this was first brought up, at least to me, I made it a practice everywhere I go to start looking at. And, and I was amazed at how many places out of town that I was paying and never realized I was paying it, because I never paid attention to the itemized-
We'll get to that in just a little bit, as far as who-
Yeah, but if you start, start looking at your ticket, you'd be amazed at all places that you go, that you are paying it and never realized it.
In fact, for see, I tell you what, I, I, I think I might hit on a lot of information that people want, and if I don't, at the end, we can circle back around, if that's okay. As far as alcoholic beverages, again, if you go into a bar here in town or a restaurant and drink a beverage on-site, you would pay a hospitality tax on that. But if you go to a grocery store or a variety shop and buy a, a 12-pack of Bud Light and walk out, you would not pay hospitality tax on that. So it's the, it's the on-site consumption that would differentiate paying hospitality or not. Let's see, another example I wanna give is if you go into Walmart, you walk over to the deli side and you've got a table of Krispy Kreme doughnuts sitting right there, and then you've got a package of deli-prepared doughnuts. You would pay a hospitality tax on the deli-prepared because that food was prepared on-site. But the Krispy Kreme is prepackaged off-site and brought in. So it, it's understanding what it applies to and what it doesn't apply to. And I, I think a lot of this is, should council want to, to move forward in consideration of a hospitality tax, there's a lot of public, there's a lot of education that we have to do with stakeholders on ensuring that they're clear on what hospitality tax has to be applied to and what it doesn't. So how's, how's it collected? It's exactly the same as a state sales tax. It, it's a pass-through to customers, this is not something that's coming out of the, the pockets of restaurant owners. Just as they ring up a sales transaction, it would apply to 7%, then it would apply to 2%. And it's not 2% on, on, on the, the charged meal and the sales tax. It's whatever the charge price is, 7%, and then 2% of the sale price. You add all that together and you come up with your hospitality. I got a breakdown, I can, I'll show you in a few minutes. But the businesses will charge the 2%, and they would remit that to the town on an annual, on a monthly basis. And one thing, in, in just looking around at how towns are, are handling, how the businesses submit that, that payment to the town at the end of each month. A lot of them just have a coupon book, you can go print it off the internet, or they supply that with you. It simply asks, what is your gross sales, what is the amount of H-tax? And they remit that along with the check each month to the town. But that's all internal stuff that we would work out.
And that's payable directly to the town, not sent to the state back down?
Right, any H-tax is remitted directly to the town.
In a special establishment item.
And you have to have a separate fund for hospitality tax. It cannot be included in with the general fund or water or sort of fund. So how can the funds be spent? This is directly out of South Carolina Section 6173 of state law. Any tourism-related buildings, to include centers, coliseons, aquariums, none of which we have, but we do have buildings, one we'll talk about in just a little while. Tourism-related cultural, recreational or historic facilities. We do not have beach access or renourishment, and I don't think we have the capabilities to go down that route. Highways, roads or streets that are within any potential tourist areas here within town. And advertisement promotion and any water and sewer infrastructure that's used to serve tourism-related demand. So how much does it cost? Simple, 2 cents to $1. Couple of examples that we use. So if you go and it's a $10.50 dinner per person. Previously, you would pay a sales tax of 74 cents, you would have a total of $11.24. With the H-tax, for the same $10.50 meal, you would have the same 74 cent sales tax. H-tax would be 21 cent of the dinner price, and you would add those two together for a total of $11.45. So you would be looking at 21 cents that that person would pay in hospitality tax for their $10.50 meal. This is an example of a family of four, each eating $10.50, that's $42. You're looking at an 84 cent increase with H-tax for, for that family of four to eat at the restaurant.
Ted, you're using 2% as an example. Is there a state minimum or maximum?
A hospitality tax can be up to 2%. Jeff, maybe you can answer this question. I think by far the majority of people heard 2%. There, is there just a select few? Do you know a number of ones that may be at 1% or is anyone at 1%?
The only city I can think of that has a 1% hospitality tax is Clemson, but they also have a 1% hospitality fee that they adopted before the statute for H-tax passed in the General Assembly. So they, it's 2%, but it's just, it's two different levies. I, I don't know of any cities that have just gone with 1 cent, but maybe there's one out there that I don't know about.
Did that answer your question? Okay. So who has the H-tags? There's 270 municipalities in South Carolina, there's 125 or maybe a couple more that, that have a hospitality tax. Of those that don't have a hospitality tax, five are larger than the town of Batesburg-Lisville, everyone else will be smaller than us. The larger cities without the hospitality tax, and let's see if I can do this off the top of my head. Chester, Irma, Goose Creek, Hannah Hen and James Island. Those are the five that are larger than us that don't have an H-tax. Everyone else in the state that doesn't have it is smaller than the town of Batesburg-Lisville. A lot of those cities are, are, these are municipalities, Monata, Bodaw, Peeling, Gaston, Swansay, a lot of them which have populations, Gilbert Summit has 967 people. I think they have one business that would be eligible for an H-tax. There may be two, that store and eating establishment up across from where the middle school is, still exists, but- A lot of these municipalities have very few options for hospitality tax. I, I think Ridge Spring, I talked with Mayor Pat Asbault, and she said that Ridge Spring is talking about considering an H-tax at this point, right up the road. But a lot of these smaller communities just, they, they don't have a benefit from it, or some of them don't even have the ability to charge it because they would have no income within their municipalities. So just kind of a snapshot, snapshot here in Batesburg-Lisville. Johnston, Edgefield, these are the ones that have H-tags around us. You have Greenwood, Abbeville, this is kind of a wide-region shot. Lexington, Casey has it, West Columbia got it. Within the past year, they've adopted it. Lexington brought it back, they previously had it and took it out and they've since brought it back in, but then the past year and a half or two years. And, uh, again, Irma, um, did I hear Irma was considering it?
Yes.
At this point?
They are, Chaffin has it, but Irma's considering it.
Okay, Chaffin has it, Irma's considering it right now as well.
Prosperity has it, that's interesting.
Yeah, they do. So, I mean, it's a whole- What's that?
I was saying Prosperity's on the lake.
No, no, really, not really, on the way to the lake.
On the way.
But we can be on the lake, on the way to the lake.
So it's a financial fact. Hospitality tax, and, and right now, we know it'll do over 400,000 a year. It could be upwards to 500,000 a year. And, and the reason that we can't really give you 100% accuracy is because of this right here, deli's, gas stations and bars. When, when Walmart submits their business license to us, that is for their entire operation. It doesn't break down what their deli sales are, what their retail sales are, what the grocery sales are. So we don't know exactly what they bring in within that deli area. Gas stations, Quick Carry doesn't tell us how much of their business license is gas sales, how much is grocery sales and how much is deli sales. So you've got IGA with a deli, a pretty successful deli, I think they do a pretty good business. Fallow has a deli, Walmart has a deli, you've got Quick Carry, Mama &amp; Pop. There's a number of places that we just, we just cannot project what they're gonna do in hospitality tax because we have nothing coming, we don't really boil down to them starting to submit it to see what kind of money we're bringing out from those establishments. In 2016, across the board, restaurants saw an increase of 13% in Batesburg-Lisville. That's coming from the reported business license data that, that we received in. Not saying that all businesses increased 13%, but the average was 13%. That goes back to the statement I said earlier that municipalities see an average of 5% to 10% increase in hospitality tax revenue on an annual basis. And why is that? You start creating, you start creating opportunities for more people to come here so the budget increases, the amount that restaurants bring in increases. So we were asked what within our general fund right now is used, could be spent with, at, at a hospitality tax fund or hospitality tax revenue. Certainly, we have a number of different events on an annual basis that, that we typically get into overtime with our law enforcement, and we have expenses related to that. The overtime for those events could be paid for out of the hospitality tax funds. Any facility maintenance and park maintenance with regards to Wilson and College, um, College Park, Haynes Auditorium, the train depot that's within these areas. Any of the parks of recreation maintenance and improvements could be paid for. These are budgeted numbers, utilities for our parks of rec, and any events. These are budgeted numbers with regards to our budget this year. So you're looking, there's more, but these are, these are things that are specifically related to events, parks of recreation, which from my recommendation, I would, I would recommend sticking within these categories. That's about 56,000 that the hospitality tax could, uh, don't really like to use the word offset from the general fund, it's just those, those expenditures could be shifted to the hospitality tax. There's some realities. We have 16,000 budgeted for parks of recreation for one year of H-tags. It would take 25 years of budgeting at 16,000 a year to equal what one year of hospitality tax would bring in for the town. We have aging facilities and equipment. Our Christmas lights are very old, we've received a lot of complaints over the past two years about those. You know, Haynes Auditorium is, is sitting up there, and right now, it is used for a bluegrass festival, but we use it sparingly for a couple of other things, Easter egg hunt with serendipity, but other than that, it doesn't get much use, and, and that's because it needs a lot of upgrades and improvements if, if we're going to bring more things to Haynes Auditorium. But I can tell you that, that renovations to, to do this is gonna be in hundreds of thousands of dollars to, to do these improvements. Our park equipment is, and we're deadlining a lot of park equipment as it breaks, and, and it's just the replacement parts. Either the equipment's so old, David's back there, we hear it all the time, they don't manufacture this, this equipment anymore. So it's either buy new or take it out. And we don't have the funding mechanism within the general fund budget to be able to buy new, new park equipment. We, we'll hit that in just a couple of minutes, it's, it's just beyond what our general fund can do. And I'll tell you what, though, this is a lot of donated equipment that these parks had, they've lasted a very long time. And I think there's some things that we might can leave out there, but we really do need to start looking at upgrading our park equipment. Wilson Street Park doesn't have bathrooms, so if people can go to that park, they, they can't even use the restroom when they, when they go to that park. And honestly, the strategic plan has a lot of stuff in it that can be paid for with the hospitality tax fund. You guys are, we're very close to council adopting a strategic plan. And within that is a lot of community event-type things, creating opportunities for our youth and revitalization, beautification, improvement of parks. We went through it a while ago, there's just a lot of stuff in there that if you adopt this, there's gotta be a mechanism in place for us as staff to have to be able to fund these types of projects. And so we've gotta look, and one of the things in the strategic plan was reviewing and analyzing new revenue sources, which is what we're doing tonight. So going back within the strategic plan, I believe, right here, a couple pages in, it said the council priorities, which I think is page 11 on, on your form. This is nothing more than that list written up here. And flipping through this earlier today, here's the items that can be, could be done with a hospitality tax. Hospitality tax could improve our connections between our downtown districts, sponsor youth activities. Like I said, we're looking at the new revenue sources, which kind of will fall into financial stability and sustainability of local town finances. Property maintenance, appearance, we've mentioned earlier about facade grants and being able to help people out with the appearance of their buildings. Approving overall customer service and town and community relations. I, I think anytime you are responsive to the town's needs, a lot of people want our parks improved. I've heard it a number of times, that's just going to improve the customer service that we're providing. Improving our town parks, more family-oriented events. I can't tell you how many times I've heard movie nights in the park, among many other things. We're having more family-oriented events. And downtown revitalization, especially on the Batesburg side of town.
I would've thought it could've been used for traffic-related issues.
It can if it's within the tourism, what's deemed tourism.
Particularly if it's on a major car.
Right, so yes.
What about downtown revitalization? Would that apply to the streets in downtown?
So you have an event, let's say a new event's created that, that draws people in on Oak Street in the downtown Batesburg district. Obviously, that road's in very bad shape and needs a lot of improvement. Yes, you can improve the railways down in that area if you're bringing people into that area. We have a lot of areas to focus on. You know, town entrance signs and wayfinding signage, I'll, I'll say this, I've had a- I'll say this, I've had a number of people come into town. One of them, not long ago, said, Teddy, hold on, I just came into town and I had no clue when I entered Batesburg-Laceville. Came off exit 39 down 178. And he said, I had no clue when I entered Batesburg-Laceville. And obviously, he's in the, he's in the profession. And so he's looking for different things like this. But he said, man, you've got to do something to let people know you're coming into Batesburg-Laceville. And I said, I don't disagree with you. We need, I think we have 11 total roadways that actually lead into Batesburg-Laceville. Two of the entrances have, and that's Highway 1 on the Laceville side of town, that Jim Oswalt and right past the police department. We have no other town entrance signs on any of the major roadways leading into town. Park improvements, again, a lot of this is redundant.
Nothing beyond what DOT thinks. Was there a couple of others?
Right. Nothing beyond what DOT will have town limit sign, Batesburg-Laceville town limit signs. But I think those are missing off a couple of the roads coming into town. Again, I won't sit and read out everything that's, that's on this. And in no way is this all inclusive. This is just items that we hear that reoccurring and just throwing them up there as ideas of areas of focus.
And the demolition of dilapidated buildings, is that only in the tourist areas or is that?
I would, I would say yes, if it's an area of, because Jeff, you can, I know a lot of people have used H-tacks for demolition of dilapidated buildings.
Would that be on the two main quarters, like number one highway, Highway 23, if there's those buildings that existed that need to come down because those are the quarters through our town? Would they be eligible?
Yeah, you know, I think I would, I would look at it as trying to create the environment that people want to visit. If you think about the things that people are looking for when they, tourism is used in the statute, but the reality is for a small town in inland South Carolina, it's really more about visitation. It's people going outside their normal commute to go somewhere to eat or enjoy entertainment or whatever it is that they're wanting to visit the community for. So to me, it would be create an environment that people are fit in visiting. One is safe, one is attractive, one is well lit, and one that has things to do. And I think if you're, if you're checking any number of those boxes, then you found something that's eligible for H-tacks. So I mean, I think the entry quarters are, could be an area of emphasis. And, you know, it'd be a council decision because you've got so many different priorities you could fund.
Just thinking that, you know, and Jeff, thank you for that because visitation is totally different from tourists because when, I don't see Batesburg as a, as a tourist destination. And if you come in from Saluda to go to KFC and go back to Saluda, how's that tourism?
Well, here's the thing, people are going to find tourism different.
Right. I think the way he did it was better because of visitation.
Some people.
It would be stretching.
Some people view tourism as going to the beach or I'm going to Gatlinburg or some major destination that I think a lot of people deem that to be tourism. I think tourism is, Jeff, you have some.
I was just going to say, I mean, you're right. I mean, the definition is really important. And at one time, the Tourism Expenditure Review Committee at the state in Department of Revenue was using a 50 mile standard. But now they've talked about it in terms of traveling outside your normal commute. So, you know, for instance, if.
Or having a specific reason to be going to that area?
Yeah. So using the Saluda example, for instance, somebody who lives in Saluda and let's say works in Johnston, or lives in Saluda, works in Saluda, and then they drive to Batesburg-Laceville for an event or to eat or whatever it may be, and they go home. Technically, they would meet that definition of tourist. But I just think visitation, I think is a great term to use for something like that.
Tourism is the word of statute, but again, tourism is, how do you define tourism?
But even if you use visitation, I'm listening to what Rachel was saying, is that the migrant workers come here once a week and they do their shopping and they eat here once a week and then they go back home. I mean, are they tourists? Are they?
Well, they wouldn't be here if they didn't shop.
Well, I understand what I'm saying, but they, are they, are they quote unquote visitors in the spirit of the law, of, you know, what the hospitality tax is for, you know?
Well, I used to work in Columbia too. And on Friday afternoons, pretty much, again, it's a destination in that there was, everybody in the office would load up to go to Sheila's Barbecue. They would take two hour lunches. They would drive down here.
Sheila's Barbecue is a destination, no doubt about it.
I'll tell you, Batesburg-Laceville's a destination for all the teachers that work in Gilbert and want somewhere to eat on their teacher work days. They drop in Batesburg.
Yeah, look at the dance companies that come here.
Joey's can't hold them all.
And if I may, and if I may, let's say we had, let's say we had no tourism.
Yeah.
You call them tourists?
Use this to create tourism.
For what?
Let's, let's create things that bring people to this community.
That's a different conversation.
Well, that's what I'm saying is you start bringing the funds in and.
That would probably be the more toll free, appropriate definition of tourism, is people that come to Batesburg-Laceville for a reason.
Right.
Rather than going on vacation to town. Like we say, go to the beach and that's.
Well, I think there's just this natural thought that tourism is, let's go to the beach. And it can be much more than that.
Like I say, they come to Sheila's Barbecue, that's a destination. You know, but I don't see people that's, in Saluda, they don't have, well, they do have McDonald's now. But, you know, they would come because they want to go to McDonald's. I don't see that as tourism. But like the mayor said, now, we have something here, like the, you know.
The Haynes Auditorium is restored and there's events that they start coming.
And that is something for folks, it comes to, like the bluegrass. That's a destination people come.
The state band competition, you've got the dance competitions at Fairmont.
Yeah, look at the draw for the poultry festival. That is a, that is a.
The town, the town, national.
All right. So we agree on that. Haynes in the, in the poultry festival, Sheila's. Destination spots, right? But then you can extrapolate that out to say, okay, well, now we're going to, we're going to subsidize our general fund to do all types of other things that are not specifically geared towards Haynes, whatever you need to do for Sheila's end, overtime for the poultry festival. If, if, you have to have that as a focus if that's going to be the focus. You can't go all over the place and say, you, you know, all these other things we're going to fund now because.
By statute, you can't.
Right. But what I'm saying, and I'm not necessarily opposed, but giving the staff a blank check of 400, 500,000 dollars before we have some infrastructure, some, some real planning and discussion about, okay, this money's going to be earmarked for Haynes or the next, until we get it going.
Absolutely. Can I have just a couple of minutes?
Yeah.
In the presence? Okay. I think I might be able to clear some of this up. So early focus improvements that, again, these are items that we've identified. It's not all inclusive. It, it doesn't have to exactly be. These are areas that, that we feel like we could put early focus on. I can tell you, we bring a number of people in from outside this community to come in and use our parks. We talked about needing to upgrade our park equipment. I will tell you this, a set like this is about $200,000 to put a playground set like that in. So we've got two parks that we need to ensure that we've got good playground equipment in. You're looking at about 400,000 right there, just to two, do two sets like this.
And that would, for serendipities, that would be a destination for people with their kids.
I'm not, I'm not fighting against this. I just want to say that we need to have, I don't think that is a good idea. Yeah. And we don't have that plan. We can't just do this in two meetings. You know, and say, we're going, we're going to pass it in two meetings. We're going to have to have some serious thought.
Well, and that may go back to your facade improvement grants, coming up with a plan, plan for downtown Batesburg district. That, that may not be something right away that we jump on until we really formulate a plan for that area and what we want to do. But movies in the park, this is just taking off around municipalities and counties, I think nationwide, is having movies in the park. We, we did the research and basically what you see there with the screen, the sound system, to have a turnkey done, you're looking at $2,000 a movie because you have to buy licensing for the movies. You would want to have a turnkey company come in with the screen, the sound, somebody to work the sound and to do that. So we talked about family oriented things. We can allot money to have so many movies in a park within a year time period. New Christmas lights, I mentioned that earlier. And David's back there. I think if he comes in and says again that he had another guy get shocked by Christmas lights because of how old they were and the wiring shocking him trying to put it up. And they ensure every bulb is working before it goes on to the pole. They plug them in, they make sure they all work, but then sometimes hours or within a couple of days, half the, half the lights are burnt out. These lights are well over 20, 25 years old at this point. We've had to throw a bunch of them away. You know, this is a, this is something we can do really quickly to be able to show, hey, your H-tac, the H-tax money's at work. Here, here's some improvements we're doing. We're putting new Christmas lights up. We've had a challenge with the, the Christmas tree lighting, finding quality trees each year. I think the tallest we've got so far was 14 feet. And we normally don't get the cream of the crop because they're donated. So this is just one thing that we can do. I can tell you, we reached out to, to the company that's always supplied and tried to help us with our Christmas lights. To do what we need to do, you're looking at about $60,000. He sent us a quote back today. So we're around $60,000 for Christmas lights to, to upgrade and replace the ones we have. Again, going back to town entrance signs, this was just something we had done for the sake of discussion. Welcome to Batesburg-Laceville signs. The guy that did this up, you're looking at about $30,000 to do nine of those signs for the other nine entrances leading into town. Again, I think future look, you talk about wayfinding signage and you just talked about banner posts throughout the town, improving the look of our streetscaping. Going back to plan, you know, there are, there are specific companies out there. There's many of them. The Land Plan Group is one out of Columbia. What they do is master planning for, for streetscaping, beautification, improvements to community facilities. They really, their focus is municipality and government entities for the most part. So just reached out to them and these examples actually came from them just to have someone to be able to show you. This was a, this was a part of a master plan that Camden did for a plaza area in Camden. So what they do is they come in, they meet with council and say, okay, what are your beautification and revitalization priorities? What do you want to do? You give that to them. They go out to your, your major corridors. They go out to your Haynes Auditorium, your parks, any other areas that you may mention. They do a study of those facilities and they actually do the renderings to show what that project would look like. They give you a cost opinion. So when you talk about needing to build a plan and a budgetary plan on an annual basis, you're going to need something to guide you to say, okay, this is how much this streetscaping project will cost. This is how much putting bathrooms at, at Wilson Street Park would cost. This is how much Haynes Auditorium electrical upgrades or, or new playground equipment outside. They give you those costs and that can help us on a budget, annual budget. Because without, without a master plan or study like that, we, we don't know how much to allot towards specific projects. So we would, we would want to put early focus on trying to get a plan done.
Early cost estimates.
I was going to say, aren't they a little expensive?
Well, it depends on how far you want to go. You're, if you want to have a lot of projects.
We could do a few projects for that.
Well, probably not that many projects. See, I think you can do a lot of Christmas lights and things, but when you talk about streetscaping projects and upgrades to facilities, 100,000, we'll do a little bit, but not a lot. But that can be.
But that's the cost for the engineering company, this firm to come in and do the study.
Well, it depends on how many projects you want them to consider and how extensive they're going to have.
I'll figure this thing out.
Again, we're just saying, this is a, it depends on how far you want to go. You're going to get up to 100,000 the more you, more projects that you have ready, engineered, designed, ready to go and.
But again, that's using hospitality funding.
Right. That's using hospitality tax funding to fund the study and to have this stuff ready to go.
That's 20% of what you anticipate in the first year of receiving.
25%, yeah.
Right, 25%.
Oh, yeah. I mean, again, you got to, you've got to put a plan in place for future projects and what you want to spend it on and how much are those projects going to cost? Again, it doesn't have to cost as much. It depends on how much you want to have ready to go. How far do you want to go? So one thing, nobody should be unfamiliar with this as of right now. The hatchery that's being torn down up at Columbia Farms.
Me too.
The, the hatchery that's being torn down at Columbia Farms. Ran to work one morning, saw it without the sides. That side, that section's since been taken down. Looked at it and said, wow, this could be a really good farmer's market or a covered market of some type. Just started the conversation with Columbia Farms about what the intent was of that building and, and the property. Basically, Columbia Farms said, this guy is tearing the building down. He's selling it off. That's how he's making his money. And our intent for the property is to leave the slab of concrete down through there and that's how it's going to stay. Well, being within, so close to the railroad right away and DOT right away, you never really can develop that property back. You'll never be able to build anything there in the future. If you do, it'll be something really small. So a growing concept, are these open, are these markets, farmers markets, they have multi-use as well. But engaged the conversation and it has since kind of evolved. So to acquire the land from the back of Columbia Farms' office building to the end of the property line down near the, the old thrift shop and to acquire 200 feet of the covered building with the sides off but leaving the roof on, they, we have an offer out there that if we wanted to do that, we could acquire that for $70,000. I think most everybody has, has had a conversation with me or been out there to look at it. And that, again, this is the type of project that H-tacks would support. It could become a community facility that is used either for farmer's market, used for peach tree 23 yard sale, or used for many other reasons that, that may be determined. But we do have an offer out there that if we would like to purchase that land and 200 feet of covered building, we can do so for We'll talk a little bit about implementation. State law requires a positive majority vote by council. Ordinance should be passed with a rollout phase. That, that, we feel like there should be a rollout phase associated with this. We're going to need to make sure that we have community involvement in this process, stakeholder involvement. Just a timeline that we put together based on presentation tonight. If this is something that council says that they want brought back and let's actually take a vote on this, then we would want to do an initial public notification, put a press release out that council is considering an H-tack. We would want to schedule the information sessions, specifically one session to have restaurant owners, our owners, people who would be required to remit this back to the town, have a meeting with them and then have another public input session to allow citizens to come in and provide input and to learn more about the hospitality tax to assure that they understand fully what it is. We would say if council wants it brought back, we, we would certainly say nothing on the month of June. At the earliest, July 10th would be what we would recommend, bringing it back. There's, there would still be work up until that time. it back. There's, there would still be work up until that time. August would be a second reading. We would continue to work with businesses to ensure that they're ready to go. And September, we would have to look at the modified budget for the town and adopting a modified budget in September. And work with businesses, continuing to just do.
Where's our budget director?
Based on, based on the last special council meeting and just feedback through emails that we're passing along, just trying to get somewhat of a clear direction on exactly what we really wanted to refrain from and what I was really attempting not to get involved in was a recommendation of any type or really staff steering the direction of council pay, training travel funds or anything like that. Because I don't feel that myself or our staff should in any way be involved with regards to council pay or training and travel funds related to you guys. And, and so really was just wanting some more clear direction. Some emails came out and there was some feedback from some of those emails. So really what we, what we gave you guys tonight was a general fund balanced budget that, that has a 1% cost of living adjustment for all employees within the general fund. It was brought up about the Christmas bonuses and longevity bonuses, of doing away with those but putting it, well, putting it towards, putting those types of funds towards salary increases, which would more positively affect employees' retirement. But what we've done is done a hundred dollar, still done a hundred dollar Christmas gift to employees at Christmas time and service awards rather than longevity awards being on an annual basis. The, the service awards being at the five-year increments for employees.
So being a service award?
Being a service award.
All right. That means it's a one-time fund?
You would get it at five-year, you would get it at 10-year, 10-year, 20-year.
It's a one-time, it's not.
Not annual.
Okay.
The council pay compensation line item was, was reduced to zero. The training, the council training line item created was 13,500 total and a merit pool was funded at $26,731 for merit increases to be given in the general fund. On the, can I hit the enterprise fund real quick? The enterprise fund has the same 1% cost of living adjustment for all employees of the enterprise fund. And the merit pool was funded at $13,500 for merit-based increases.
Do you think the enterprise fund would bound?
It is bound.
Why are we adjusting?
Because the, the, the feedback that was received was look at a, to kind of balance a cost of living and to ensure that every employee for the, for the loss of the half percent retirement increase on the employee's side, the half a percent loss, do a 1% cost of living across the board for all employees. And then there would be merit-based increases.
When the merit-based, I thought we decided that we were going to have peer review. It wasn't strictly, how are you going to, how are you going to do the merit this way?
Well, and, and that is something that we will determine as administration and department heads. But yes, we have discussed, we have discussed not only our evaluations and department heads' evaluations of their employees, but the possibility of having peer evaluations.
But Ted, I'd like to have, I don't know how council feel about that, but I'd like to have directions from council to staff that they have some type of three-pronged criteria for the merit pay. Because you, you really kind of put, set yourself up for Ted didn't like me and I didn't get no, I didn't get my merit pay, but Bob got his merit pay. How did that work? You know, then people like, well, you know what I'm saying? You set it up for.
Have we got department heads here? I, I would like.
Question is whether the council can stipulate that.
Well, I would like to hear their input about, since they do their evaluations, right?
David would do the evaluation of his employees. Jeremy would do the evaluation.
How do you feel about that, having their coworkers in on their evaluation? A.
Well, for Jeremy, that's not as.
Yeah, I got one.
Yeah, well.
I like the self-evaluation and then our evaluation kind of.
In, in my group, in my group, it wouldn't.
Yep.
I could do that with no problem. In my, in my group, I can speak for any other department, but.
Well, upon your own evaluation, if you were being evaluated by staff, do you feel you need other?
I'm, I'm, I'm all for it. I mean, you know, that's fine with me. I mean, I would mind that.
I'm not sure this is something we can dictate. And there's a reason why it comes from management, president, or president's office. And one is that a peer-to-peer review could be substantially, or could lead to additional insight as to what's going on, but it may not be enough information to create a value-based judgment on their actual performance. Because you have things like, oh, this is my best friend. They're going to give me a good score. We all know what is riding on this. So we're going to artificially employ schools. Same thing with a self-evaluation. It's easier to identify, you know, I'm a great employee, but it's not as easy to identify weaknesses. And so balancing, having a three-pronged approach is something that we're discussing and that we'll reband.
We actually have been discussing.
And so we are looking at.
I'm about to add that as a direction.
But I'll be honest, in the council manager form of government.
Again, I'm not, I'm not.
Something that falls within my.
I think this is a management's.
Not that I'm trying to keep you out. I'm just saying that, that within our form of government.
It's a, it's a, me and administration department heads to determine what we feel is best. But I can rest assured, we've been talking about a multi-tier approach to evaluations.
It's like you see it to be a fair evaluation because I like what Jeremy said about a peer, a peer, your self-evaluation. Because you're not going to give yourself all, because you know better. You're not going to give yourself all glowing marks. You're going, you're going to have some, and then you get a feel, you can see the, how you feel about yourself as an employee. And then you can balance that with, with actually, so who's doing it? Are you doing it or, or the department head is doing?
No, they, they do the, they do the evaluations, but all evaluations do come to me for a signature and for us to talk about.
Right.
The evaluation's not done by their immediate supervisor?
They are.
And then elevated to the department head and then.
Well, a lot of our department heads serve as the immediate supervisor. So maybe.
But you know, that self-evaluation also is an opportunity to find what that employee's career path is. Help, let's help that person get there, you know? And just like a peer review, I mean, people that I work with routinely but not on a regulated basis needs to have input as to what I can do better than, to enhance my position and the county's position.
And these guys will tell you, we've talked about this in the department heads for a while. We, we, we've been talking about.
We have a question now.
Maybe you know it might stick.
We, we, we'll put together a good fair system.
Right. But let us know what the process is, just so we know.
Okay.
When we all have determined that, the process.
We will get word July. I think we said July 1st.
We'll start this thing about October, I think.
In October, we're going to do the evaluation.
Well, we had talked about doing all evaluations at one time of the year because it gets really hard for, for some departments with many employees to consistently have to be doing evaluations. Would rather look at doing all of them at one time. So that's another topic we've been talking about.
But I, I think an evaluation is something you need, just like ours, each plant, you revisit it all year long. I mean, it's, it's, you know, bend it with a hip and a mouse.
Yeah, let, let's steer back the budget. We'll come back, we'll come back to council and let you know what we determined on the evaluation part. I, I mean, I hit the highlights of the budget. You can get it. It's really up for discussion for you guys at this point.
Best, in 2016, 17, we took $100,000 out of the reserve fund. So we have plans that we, there's no.
Which budget, which fund are you talking about?
This is from 2016, 2017. I'm trying to pull that one.
But which fund, water shore or general fund?
From the reserve fund. I think it's from the enterprise one. Because the general fund never has that kind of. There was a reserve fund and we took $100,000 out of it. And we planning to pay that back on.
We have used, we have, no, we have used a number, since I've been here, we, like the Wellington tank grant project, Bobcat Road, Bob Shark Boy.
Sewer repay, we just got through doing.
Yeah. So there, there's been a number of things that we've done, that we've asked for council to approve, funds from the reserve to, to do those.
That's the reserve fund.
Every which line I have seen.
I thought it was supposed to come, I thought it was coming back in two.
But, but all the new water plant expenses with regards to engineering and all of that been paid from the reserve fund. Wellington tank, the grid match and the improvement of that.
This wasn't like, and I, I can't pull it up on my, I don't know.
Was it for the industrial part? It could have been.
I don't know. I know it was.
It could have been industrial park expenditure for engineering and stuff related to that.
But I'll be putting.
It's not the bond money.
Or is that just going to be done?
All, all the money that's been going into reserve fund was us having that funding set aside for the water project payment. It's just been going in, un-airmarked, not earmarked, not earmarked for anything in particular, but we have like the liquid lime chemical feed system at the wastewater treatment plant. We ask for those funds from the reserve account. So we've used it to get some things done. As far as, we put a transfer into that fund of how much each month? 55,000?
Paying it back.
How much are we putting in the reserve fund?
Sorry.
51.
All right. So we're putting 51,000 a month into the reserve fund. So essentially we are putting money continuously into it.
Now, is there money in the, and I can't pull up my, my budget. It's a bad thing about, I have, is there money in the, in the budget for the water plant payment?
Yeah, actually the, the reserve budget that you see of the 600 and 2381, 62381, that's, that's what that.
Is that for servicing, the loan service?
That's the loan service for, for phase one.
For the proposed?
Of the proposed water project, bring the raw water back to town, the phase one portion of that. That's the payment.
Okay. And that's in the input. Did, all right. We had an increase in this money for 40. But have we been putting the money aside or have we been spending the money for water increase? We increased the water by 27, 29%.
We have mostly been setting that into the reserve. I think the balance at this point is 800 and $74,000 roughly is what the reserve balance is. But we also have the 231,000 and some change sitting into the USDA debt service account. You could bind it to, we're actually a little over a million that is sitting as a reserve fund. But we went ahead and stuffed 231,000, which was the USDA reserve component into a separate account for that.
The 13,500. If, at the last meeting, and I think that someone else mentioned it, that if council attended three meetings per year, the MASC winter meeting, the summer meeting, usually in Hilton Head, and the National League of Cities Conference in DC, that would cost about $3,000, all three of those meetings, covering all the expenses. So that means only about four councilmen could do that per year. What would happen if five or six councilmen decide in a year they wanted to go?
You know, one of the suggestions thrown out in, in email was to fund approximately 1,500 a year towards council members to attend municipal association training. And that's really kind of how I set that up to begin with as a starting point. You know, y'all could certainly have discussion related to training. It's, it's open for discussion. That's kind of the, the direction that I took that was put out there in formulating that.
1,500 would cover.
Now, I don't know if everybody intends on attending the municipal association.
But that, 1,500 would cover about the winter meeting and the summer?
It would cover the winter and summer. The H land, hometown legislative action day, which is your spring, I think, well, that's the winter, late winter or the spring, and then your summer. That, that would cover those two.
Right.
We did pose the question out to the list serve and asked other municipalities what their budget items were, and they just said as needed. So it's not as though they count on a specific number or they just, they budget whatever. If they need more, they, they throw a little bit more.
Right. I mean, they, they overbudget it so they know that they won't.
Need some more appropriation.
Well, a lot of them do supplemental appropriations. They'll, they'll start with a number, just putting it out there and then if they leave board because more people decide to go, they'll, they'll find the funds and move it. So a lot of people do.
Easiest thing is if time arises, they bring it before council and get council to approve it. We've done that before.
Right.
Because that, that's what you're paying for.
That's a discretion of council, training and travel funds.
I mean, the thing is, is right now, no staff go to training outside of the state other than Ted. What's your name? Ted? I'm a, Ted, I'm a combined two. Other than Ted and it's established in his contract. But no other staff goes to training outside of the state. So.
You consider council as, council as staff?
I know, I'm saying staff. Staff. So to pay for council to go outside of the state for conferences, but not pay for staff, for the professional staff development, I just find a little, I have a little hard time swallowing that.
Well, evidently there's not a need for staff to go outside of the state.
I'm sure there is, but if it's not in the budget, they can't go. So they reap a lot more benefit by going to some of these conferences than we will.
I was going to say, if, if we had council to go out of state, why don't we have employees that need to go out of state? I mean.
I don't know what employees need to do.
Well, what does the council need to do?
We need to go out of the state on occasion.
Okay. I, I think the employees should be given the same opportunity.
I, I, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
But I thought I heard you say you didn't see a reason for them to go out of state.
No, I did not say that. Chip, listen, listen. I said 1,500 would cover only the MASC two meetings a year.
You'll have to be choosing about which ones you go to.
Okay, we'll see. We're doing the same thing to staff. That's what we're telling staff they have to do.
Is what?
They have to choose where they go in-state. Or they could maybe go to one out of state, but I doubt they could with what the budget is.
We evaluate, as far as staff training, we, we evaluate that with regards to, to each department. A, a lot of the training is pretty set and determined for most, most of staff.
So as I said, there's not a need for staff to go out of state for training.
I, I won't say that. There are times where it drives. There, there are times where it drives.
I think I'd say about, I don't know, the state thing got, got, got going. But, but we are members of the league of, of cities. I mean, I, I, if I go to DC, I'm staying with, with my family and, you know, I'll go to the, I did go one year. It's, it's good to go and network to all. And I, I think all of us, I mean, we, you, you were a graduate of municipal association.
Were you?
But I don't think I've ever been to a municipal association training where you didn't break something back that was valuable to, and worth the investment.
I, I completely agree that it's valuable. But I don't know that there's any one of us that needs to go to three different trainings.
I wouldn't go to three different trainings. I mean, I, it's, it's, it's always cool to go through the, the winter meeting. And that's right in Columbia. You don't have to spend the night. You go.
That's, that's the one I went to.
Yeah. And then, so those two, I don't know what the third one.
And I went to Charleston and, and I learned a lot. You know, you were there.
Yeah. We were at the, the winter meeting too, I think, your first year up in, at the Marriott. So there's some value in it. And I think we, we're going to keep having this squabble.
I guess the question is, is $1,500 a council person a reasonable amount of money for us to budget?
I don't know.
Is that what we have?
Why can't we go back to the old?
Actually, the, the, the trainees, the training and travel funds before there was any increase or change in council pay was nine hundred and seventy-five dollars a year.
Those left.
It was nine hundred, then you have the three hundred for training.
No, 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 the, the, it was four seventy-five and four fifty or something like that.
The stipend, seventy-three dollars.
The two combined was like nine hundred and seventy-five.
Why can't we just go back to that, and then everybody can be happy, uh, you get, you get seventy dollars a month, and you get to go.
The problem with that right now is if we do that, then how are we going to fund staff's increase?
Right, and that, that must, I would.
So it's, it's coming on ball down to, does staff get paid or does council get paid? That's it in a nutshell.
Well, no, because I think if council said tonight, told Ted.
I'm not texting and calculating. See, y'all know.
If council told Ted tonight, let's go and buy that, um, Columbia Farms, uh, property. He'd find that money to do it, he'd find the money to do it, and so, you know, seventy dollars. It seems to be reasonable for what we do. As, just as a token of what we do, and then whatever, 'cause we did it before.
Just as a point of clarification, I would not recommend buying that market unless there's gonna be an H tax to come. Cause I don't think there'd be a funding mechanism that could sustain it, any improvements.
We get it, but we also need to look at that too, because it ain't gonna be available in time for the H tax, so.
You actually brought up.
But, but, but again, I don't know, Seth or Ted remembers, what was our, our, uh, each council member? We had a training amount of nine seventy-five, and then we had our stipend amount.
Of thousand.
Which was seventy-three, so what was our total? For a council member prior to, which I think was less than fifteen hundred dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah, so you had a thousand for compensation.
Okay.
Okay, and then you had nine seventy-five, and that was a combined total of training and travel.
I see, so, so we're a little less at fifteen hundred dollars.
So fifteen hundred, you're getting more for travel and training than you got before, because you got nine seventy-five before.
Right.
Right.
Then you got your, whatever that monthly gas, water, pot water.
But I'm, I'm just reading, I, I think it's more important that we make sure that our staff and our employees are compensated more so than us.
If you stuck, and, and just, if you stuck with the fifteen hundred dollars training and travel, but you went back to the thousand pay. All you do is nine thousand dollars to the council compensation line item, but you would have to deduct nine thousand off of the merit pool.
Well, not necessarily merit pools, so Ted, you can, you can find, I think that would be interesting to do, if we, if we tell, if we directed staff to say, can you find it? In other areas without bothering the, um, the, the merit.
I would, I would open it up back here and, and say, ask these guys, we have not built fluff.
No.
To be able to pick and pull from in these budgets, we really have gotten down to a zero-based budget that we, we are budgeting based on our needs on an annual basis.
Fine, but like I said, I, I think that if, uh, if, um, council gave me direction to buy that property, you'd find the money to buy that property. But that's not here nor there, so, I mean, I'm fine with, uh, the way we, the way we, uh, the, the way we, uh, we have it. But, you know, we do need to recognize that, uh, there should be some token for, uh, for council in form of, maybe not the three hundred or whatever. But something, because, you know, we do take our time and time away from, uh, from, uh, you know, from my son, 'cause you can't. Not speak to somebody in, in the market, and if they have a problem, we have to address it as elected officials, and that, that is worth something.
Out of the interest of time, so are we okay with the fifteen hundred dollars a councilperson for the purposes of the thirteen thousand five hundred per county?
Would I agree?
Yeah.
And you can always.
That's, that's what we're trying to sell. Not, not thrilled, but, yeah. And then you can also, people who don't go can give to people who wanna go, right?
Wait a minute, no, this is not, this is not individual, this is in a pool, right?
It's a pool.
So this is not individual.
Oh, I thought it was individual, okay.
Okay, fifteen hundred dollars times nine people.
For fifteen hundred dollars.
But the thirteen-five is in the council.
That's allocated per district.
Yes, you can have my money to go to Washington.
I think what they're saying is the whole pool's thirteen-five, but it, that is based on fifteen hundred per council.
If I don't go to wherever, the money's there.
And I can go to DC.
Then it comes back to now, remember before we council voted to, council voted, if I'm not going, I'm giving you my money? That, and we just come back and do it like that, so it's a, a bookkeeping record.
It's not the law.
Well, it's gonna be, we have to do an expense report anyway, too, forgot.
But council would approve it in advance, if you wanna go, it's allocating fifteen hundred dollars per person. I'm not gonna go, I say, Charles, take my money and go, then it comes before council for a vote in advance if you're going.
And the council says, no, I can't go.
Right.
The money's available, why can't a person who wants to go go?
It's called politics. I, I do.
Alright, let's.
I'm ready to get down here.
Yeah, let's, let's get me good one.
I'm okay with everything else that's here, having seen what the budget was before and knowing where these changes came from, so I'm good.
But you can also prefer if it's in a pool and everybody goes, then there's nothing left.
Right, then nobody else can do it anymore. Let's, it's zebra, it's zebra.
You know, if everybody wants to go to.
Let's do something new appropriation.
To the summer, to the summer meet, no, to the, no, you won't have enough money, but to go to the, um, annual meeting and wherever, Charleston, Greenport, wherever it's gonna be. And that wouldn't be the rest of the funds, so just keep that in mind.
Yeah, we, and, and, 'cause it's not, there's really no cost to go to Columbia.
No.
I mean, other than like a seventy-five dollar registration.
I think it's a hundred and fifty, well, I think it's a hundred and fifty dollars.
A hundred and fifty dollar registration fee.
Yeah. Isn't that right, sir? Hundred fifty, or a hundred, one of the two.
I'll go, I'll go into to Washington, and we'll say go one room together. What'd you say? Alright, good, that's okay. Hey, y'all, have y'all been in that room with Charles?
He said if you ever been in the room with Charles.
Alright, I'm with, I'm with Bob, and Charles, we need to move forward.
Yep, is there anything else about the budget? Anything else you need to know?
I think that was the, that was the changes, that was, that was any changes from the first time.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second it.
Yeah, wait. You got a motion and second on the table?
Okay, well, then I'm gonna just bring up a general conversation that's not on the record officially. Um, with regards to the, um, the market idea, is there just any consensus?
We have no call of the market, we'll come up with a pavilion if you want to go down that route, because it would be multipurpose.
A pavilion, is, is there any consensus as far as?
This is three times interest.
Here, here's, here's where it stands, is this guy, he's making his money selling, Columbia Farms is not paying him, so. He's got about a month planned until he's done.
You're talking about the guy that's scrapping the.
Right, Columbia Farms has said, we will go ahead and pay him out of our pockets, just for the sake of giving you a little additional time, but. We're not gonna do that if you're not gonna kind of move forward with your plans and you're gonna definitely give us the money back. Now, a lot of this is, I would not recommend buying it if it appears as though we're not gonna do H tax, because there's just not gonna be a sustained funding mechanism. So that's one thing to keep in mind about that, but with regards to talking with Columbia Farms, just trying to get an idea of how to update them at this point. Not that, I gotta tell them we're definitely doing it, but.
You tell them that you're bringing an ordinance to council for review and approval for the July one meeting, that's what you tell them.
Yeah, I still have a lot of questions about it.
Where are the money's gonna come from?
That's the, that's the main question.
Again, I, I, I said I don't think we need to do it unless in the hospitality taxes.
But that hospitality tax, that one's gonna raise the money.
They would kick you in the legs a little over December.
Yeah, that's right.
And that's just initial level.
Well, let me say this, and, and my recommendation would be for the sake of time, if, if H tax, we know it's happening, but collection's not gonna begin in November. There's nothing wrong with using what the fund balance, excess fund balance of the general fund, just to go ahead and acquire it, and when H tax comes in, we can always reimburse the general fund. You could do it, as long as you've got a accounting trail to show that the money's coming, otherwise, there's, there's not gonna be a week. Until November for Columbia Farm, if that's the deal, they need to go ahead and tear it down, that timeline's not gonna be there.
Ted, listen, we did this, we, we own property out of, like, right now, because we had a, a high pressure, gotta buy it now, uh, pitch to us, and, and. Those three hundred thousand dollars, we also need to know if you can actually, uh, do, uh, the railroad and the DOT, if you can actually put the pavilion there. And then the other thing we need to look at is the, um, the, uh, safety issue of having a pavilion.
What's our liability?
On a highway in a railroad drive, and you, you're inviting kids, you're talking about attracting nuisance, you're inviting kids and families.
Well, and when we met out there this morning, I explained to you, you would have to put some type of fence around it, just.
Well, see, we need to have that, that cost in, in there, and so we'll.
And that all gets, got to study, Ted.
We have no time to get a challenge for a bit.